Ready when you are, Jason. Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending our first Governance Committee meeting. Nice to see you all here this morning. This meeting is being webcast. There's some rules and regulations that while we're in the council chamber and in the building, we need to follow. So please maintain social distancing at all times and also wear face covering at all times when in the venue unless you have an exemption. It can be removed once you are seated, but you may wish to leave it on. That's absolutely fine if you choose to do so. Can I please request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take the instructions from the town hall staff, and the assembly point is Tudor Square. Can I please ask every member to introduce themselves in turn? My name is councillor Julie Growcutt. I'm the Member for Stocks, Region of the Don and I am chairing this meeting this morning.
Councillor Penny Baker, Vice Chair and councillor of Stannington Ward.
Councillor Sean Admire Richards, Vice Chair of the Communities Transition Committee and Member for Manor and Castle.
Dondale, Co-Chair of Committee One, Our City and Member for Shire Green and Brightside.
Christine Gilligan, I'm a Hillsborough member.
Councillor Colton Rivers of Burnhill and Sharrow Vale and the Chair for Communities and Neighbourhoods with Shauny.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Mark Jones, Member for Burngriev Ward and the Chair of Transitional Committee Number Three, Climate Change, Environment and Development.
Councillor Sue Alston, councillor for Fullwood Ward.
Thank you, everyone. You're all very welcome. Item two is apologies for absence. We have apologies from councillor Mike Lavery. Are there any other apologies?
Councillor David Barker. Oh, no, he's not. I am looking at the Audit Committee, which is next week whilst at the same time looking at governance. I'll just take that all back.
Thank you, Jeanette. Item three is exclusion of the public and press. I'm not aware of any items that we need to have any exclusions for today. And item four is declarations of interest. Please come, members, if they wish to declare an interest on any item of the agenda. And item five is minutes of the previous meeting, which are at page five in the Agenda Pack. Fantastic set of minutes. Are we all happy to agree those, please? Agreed, all half a page of them? Yeah, all happy? Thank you for that. Item six is public questions and petitions. I am not aware that we have any. I've just spotted, Ruth, good morning. I've just, I've literally just spotted you up there. Nice to see you. I'm not aware that we have any public questions or petitions this morning. Okay, thank you. And item seven is the Governance Committee Terms of Reference at page 11 in the Agenda Pack and our presenting officer, Alexander, you're going to speak to that, I understand. Thank you.
Good morning, members. I'm Alex Pollack. I'm Assistant Director for Governance, just recently joined the council. And I'm afraid it's a lot of me talking today because colleagues who are going to be helping out with some of the other items have fallen sick. So apologies in advance if you're going to hear a lot of the sound of my voice. I'll try to keep it brief. On this item, you're all aware, I think, of the context in which the committee has been set up, but for the benefit of the public, there is a little explanation in section two. Otherwise, these terms of reference are commended to you for your agreement. Thank you.
Does any members have any questions or comments on the terms of reference, please? Are we all happy to agree, though? Anyone objecting? Councillor Richards.
So it's not an objection so much as under Terms of Reference 3.1b, to seek input from outside the organisation as it thinks fit, sounds a bit prescriptive. I'm trying to remember the right word there, not proscriptive, or one of those words, anyway. In as much as it's if we think we need, and I'm not sure that's necessarily within the spirit of us having, working with organisations outside or partners or whatever, is there a way of wording it that makes it sound more inclusive? Or am I just nitpicking? In which case, I'll shut up.
No, I think it's a valid, valid point, actually, and we could just amend it to say to seek input from outside the organisation and then delete as it thinks fit. That work for everyone?
Okay, that would be lovely. Thank you.
So with that amendment, are we all in favour of those terms of reference, please? Thank you. Item eight is the Programme Manager. Alex, again, on a roll.
I did warn you, I'm afraid, lots of my voice. So you've got some slides which members have got printed for you. They weren't circulated in advance, as it's a presentation, but they will be online for the public and for councillors to refer to in future. I'll take you through them today. Apologies if there are any questions on some of the detail of this project work. I'll do my best to assist in the absence of our programme manager today.
All right, just for old ladies, is it possible that when we get these in future, we have big print or bigger print? 12-point would be fine, but otherwise I'm a little bit... Thank you.
My glasses, Alan.
I agree. I've just been given glasses for the first time last week and I'm trying not to use them, but...
Councillor Jones.
Appreciate that we've not had time to see these already, but considering we've just agreed the Terms of Reference, can we have another taking from this committee that all paperwork will be distributed with sufficient time in accordance with 3.1c? Because I know that some members have expressed concerns about not being able to see the paperwork beforehand. So anything that we need to address and be mindful of would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it's a very valid point and something we need to take on board. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask a glamorous assistant, I think, to help us move through the slides today. I don't know who's doing it, it's either Jason or Jay. Thank you. So if you could move us on to the first slide, please. So obviously, this slide, which talks about progress since 29th of July, which will appear like magic in just a moment, I'm sure. The key thing is that there are, we split this programme into three parts. So it says the programme, which is essentially us organising ourselves on the background. The governance and support model side of this, it's very small, isn't it?
I can't read it. I'm just going to...
Do you have a printed copy, Councillor Baker? Would you like this one?
I don't know that I have a book else to see it.
Here you go.
I think it's past the angle we're at.
Yeah. Thank you, Jason. We'll go and pass them all around. No problem. So this really reflects the way we've organised ourselves. So as we've gone ourselves off the ground, we've been thinking about the governance and support model side of the project separately to the engagement part. And one thing to say is that we're bringing those two together because obviously one needs to be integral to the other. All three are marked as amber on here, which at this point reflects, I think, that we don't have a lot of time to get this done and to get it right. And I think therefore amber is an appropriate analysis. There's a little bit more detail there which I won't go through, but some key things that have happened already are an early piece of engagement with, I would say, a very limited but important list of stakeholders, just to help us start to plan how to get that engagement right. And then I'll move on to the next slide, please, Jason. So in terms of what...
Councillor Jones, you want to come in on that point?
Thank you. So we've got Communications, Resources, Recruiting and Comm Strategy in draft. Is there a timeline on that so we can know when everyone will be in place and are all the job descriptions already done?
So yes, the job descriptions are done. I think I might even say we've got a full complement now. My arrival a few weeks ago was probably one of the last. So in terms of being in place and knowing what we're here to do, we're reasonably well set up now. In terms of the comms and engagement side of things, our expectation is that your next meeting of this committee will have a heavy focus on the plan for engagement. And so you should be able to see the product of the strategy work and so on there.
And one other thing is, being as you've got the workload ongoing and you're in post and not giving your chance to really sit at the ground much, have you got enough resources? Do you feel that you have got the capacity to deliver this work stream, which is very tight with the support you've got?
Yeah, I did look over my shoulder at my director before I answered this. I think the answer that you were given in an informal setting, which I think is helpful to repeat here, is that there's probably never going to be enough resource. This is an enormous challenge and the appetite for engagement, especially with Sheffield as a whole, I think we could go on forever and do as much as we like if we had more resources. It's never going to be as much as we'd like to be able to do, but we're going to have a darn good go with the resources we've got.
Councillor Dale.
Thank you. Just a quick question regarding the strategy as it is in draft at the moment. And you said we're going to, sorry, you said we're going to see it probably at our next meeting. Will we see it as a draft or will we see the final, the final strategy?
I'm not sure if the intention would be to bring the comm strategy itself to the next meeting, although if members want to, I'm sure we can do that. What I'm expecting to bring is a piece of, a wider piece of work that talks about that as part of the whole engagement approach that we expect to take over the coming months. Certainly, I expect that because we'll be working closely with the committee members as we go along, that you would see draft or final and both as we go along. And you're going to hear from me a lot today that we're going to be working in a cyclical way. I'm sorry, I know that's a bit of jargon, but we're going to have to keep coming up with something, testing it, going back, changing it, adjusting based on what we hear. I think that'll apply to many or most of the kind of products we produce along the way, including that plan.
Councillor Ruth.
Thank you, Chair. Just following on from what councillor John, Mark, said earlier, can I be a bit more specific on that question and ask you whether your resources that you have at the present time? Because we're going to be judged on this in a few meetings, basically. But where would you classify this as resources? Are they excellent, good, or just adequate?
Thank you, Chair, for letting me come in on that. I think as Alex is in his second, third week here, he probably can't properly answer that. I would say excellent because of the priority that the organisation is giving to this piece of work. The thing, the presence in the room of an assistant director who's been brought in specifically to lead this, this piece is, I think, gives me the confidence that I can say that. I've got a full programme team as well sat behind Alex. We've got Laurie Brennan, who you know, who is our engagement guru, shall we say, for the organisation, and he's fully engaged with the project as well. So yeah, we are, you know, it's in the one-year plan. It's got the priority that the organisation politically has given it. But then we've made sure that we've got an officer cohort sat behind that to try and give us as much chance as possible to get to a good place by May of next year.
Councillor Dale.
Sorry, I know you're wanting to move on, but following on from that, I'd be interested to find out at what cost to other projects this is going to be happening because that resource must have been moved from somewhere else.
Thank you, councillor Dale. Yeah, we are moving a lot of resource around at the moment in order to respond to the one-year plan. So the organisation is doing a full re-gear and you're right, resources are being moved around in order to make sure that we're hitting the priorities. So it's not, so there will be some things that get delayed, but if they're not reflected within the council's priorities, but I think that's just the nature of an organisation, the size of ours, that in order to be able to deliver things properly, we need to prioritise. And the one-year plan's really helping us with that.
Sorry, councillor Ruth.
Sorry, Alex, this probably, this question is more for Laurie, I think, but in terms of engagement, I know you've done the, you've had the early engagement with stakeholders. Can we make sure that's really inclusive, that the minoritised groups have represented in that? Thank you.
Yeah, that's something that we have taken on board and will make sure that it's covered because it is really important. So thank you for raising that.
So I'll proceed through the slides, recognising the importance of your point, councillor, but without adding more, I think, to the Chair's answer. So in terms of next steps, again, you've got them in front of you, so I won't read the slide, but this is that stage in any large piece of work where we're doing a lot of planning for planning, you know, getting our ducks in order, getting our feet under our legs, making sure we're going to be able to move quickly throughout this period of time and be organised. So some of the things we're doing behind the scenes are making sure that the pieces of work that are launching the local area committees, the pieces of work that are thinking about the future structures and governance of the council, the pieces of work that's thinking about how we engage with residents in a conversation that's much bigger than just what should the structure of the governance system be in future are all really joined up. So that's taking some work in the background to make sure we're prepared to get that right. On the governance and support model, we've got to start somewhere. So, you know, as we go forward into the plan of engaging and designing in a series of cycles, we need to start with some kind of show home to say, you know, let's have a look around this show home, which bits of this should we alter or change or whatever. So we need to work right now on getting some of that design ready to be able to start that engagement. And on the engagement side itself, yeah, the planning and the work we're doing right now is to try and make sure that we get councillor, councillor Rivers' point nailed down, which is, do we get our depth and extent of engagement appropriate and right at all the different stages of this process? And we'll go into that a bit more later on and a lot more in our next meeting. Jason. So needless to say, this is a heavily summarised version of our risk log, just the items that we felt was most relevant to put in front of members at this point. You can see that what we're thinking about is a lot about getting the stakeholder engagement bit right. We're very aware that it's critical that that happens in the best way possible and the consequences if we don't are obviously broader than what we've written there, but I couldn't keep going. We've filled our whole slide. We've got to get it right. And the third one there, we're going to get into this later in the meeting. We've got some discussion to have about how we are going to need to run concurrently our designing, our engaging and our organisation of our resources to make sure that the future is supported properly on the kind of officer side, where you might ideally want to do one, then the other, then the other. We don't have time and so we're going to have to manage that risk as we go through to make sure that doesn't compromise our approach.
Councillor Richards.
Thank you, Chair. On the question of effective engagement and, sorry, one and two really about reputational damage, we have had running for a while now our... This is where I fall down completely, sorry. Thank you, the Racial Equality Commission. You didn't have your glasses on, did you? From which, I understand, we have made lots of good links and reached and talked to the people who are often considered hard to reach, but probably more accurately, we haven't tried to reach. So can we make sure that those aren't lost and that the people who are going to be doing this engagement talk to our commissioners about people who they have met and who we could engage? Because, you know, let's not put them in silos.
I think it's important because that is a critical piece of work for the council and there will no doubt be a number of recommendations coming out from the commission. So I understand that's going to be later on in the autumn. So I think it's really important that when we have those recommendations, as a committee, we look at those and see what is in there that we need to embed in this new system that comes out from that piece of work. So I know that's something Laurie is, you know, keeping a close eye on for us so that we can make sure that we do pick up and embed anything from there that we do need to do.
Okay, but in the meantime, before we get the recommendations, if informally, Laurie, you are talking to the people who've been involved so that we don't suddenly do it at the end, that we're doing it right from the beginning. And I'm sure, I'm just thinking of my two colleagues here, but the other people involved have already got masses of stuff. You can pick their brains.
I completely agree. I think the Racial Equality Commission has heard from a whole range of Sheffielders in the last since, well, particularly over the intensive period in the summer where we had all the hearings, but through calls for evidence, it's connected to all sorts of communities in Sheffield. We also shouldn't forget we've got the Sheffield Equality Partnership as well. So obviously connecting to people with different protective characteristics and networks and voluntary organisations that support those communities and connect to those communities as well. Effectively, we need a, our engagement plan has to be creating opportunities for everybody to get involved in this, whether, if they choose to get involved, but also thinking about how the development of the council's approach to engagement in anything it does. We learn from what people are saying to us and we give people a plenty of opportunity to actually talk to us about that as well. And we just need to use every network and every community organisation we have, I think.
I've got councillor Jones and then councillor Ruth.
Thank you, Chair. For me, I think, following on from councillor Richard's comments about engagement and making sure we get it right. On a legal standpoint, when we make our recommendations, because the Terms of Reference clearly say that in E and F, we'll be making recommendations to full council, what will those recommendations have from a legal perspective where we can review and insist for greater changes going forward? Because we know we're going to be moving to the committee system next year, but should we feel that the engagement hasn't been sufficient or robust enough, is there a chance for us to engineer in those recommendations that we can have ongoing reflective engagement with the communities to make sure we get everybody?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's iterative, really. So what you're going to be deciding is what it's going to look like come May 22. How you work going forward is, as long as you're within a committee system, is up to full council. So you can decide that you want to work differently in the way that you engage with the public. It doesn't necessarily have to be set in stone in May 22. You could provide a range of options for you to trial or, you know, so that you, there's certain things that you'll need some certainty around. But there might, you know, yes is the answer. You are able to change it after May 22 and keep iterating. And I'd probably recommend that we do as well, you know, so we need to keep moving, don't we, moving forward?
Thank you. That opportunity to reinvent the wheel, should it get a bit bumpy, is really welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I might be a little incoherent in what I'm about to say, but I think I'll get the message across slowly. Basically, on transition four, I'll give you an example of what I'm trying to put forward on that is on elderly care and home care and things like that. We are in a situation where we really, really need to address those areas. And my thoughts with the first officer meeting I had were around actually engaging with external people, that is, people who are receiving the service, people who are giving the service, private sector, all the people who are actually the ones that come along and say to the city council, we're not achieving what we should be achieving. So that is something that I'm trying to get to. But on the education side of things, things to look at are things like SEND. And some of the concerns I'm already getting is the fact that there seems to be a slight reluctance in terms of how do we engage with these people? So presumably, the question is, the officers will identify, along with others, the people that we want to engage with. Because I want to be completely open on the T4 side of things, to listen to people as to what they want us to deliver, rather than us imparting our views on them. So that is a key for me. So I would need some sort of engagement in that. Sorry to use an example, but I could probably be a bit more generic, but unfortunately I can't on this occasion. And the other thing that does actually slightly start to concern me, yes, we are a transition committee. Basically, what we are is a bit of a research group, aren't we, really? And people can choose to support us or probably choose not to support us. But one of the comments that was made to, I had a meeting this morning around education, and the comments were, obviously, these committees are advisory, so may not get engagement with educational learning bodies in Sheffield because they're already engaged with other work that the local authority are asking them to do. So the question on that is, are we going to be considered sort of secondary to the mainstream work that's already carrying on? In which case, it begs the question that we will not be able to deliver what we want to deliver, which is the challenge to move into a committee system that we can actually be totally inclusive on. And if I may just continue a little bit further, this was a comment made to me as well, which was, and I'm sure you'll dispel it by the end of, when Alex or somebody answers the question, is if you make comments on finance or areas where resources are affected. And the question was, we have a huge resource issue in SEND. And I've talked to frontline SEND providers and they've said, we have a resource issue. So clearly, a resource issue is something that we need to address. But, oh, no, you can't deal with that side of things because that is a resources and finance issue. So that will be dealt with by another committee or another committee. Basically, on that point, the question I'm trying to get across here is if we are going to be restricted of what we can actually comment on, apart from being an arbitrary comment, which is that can be chosen to be ignored or just taken on board if it feels right, then I don't feel that we'll be achieving what we're trying to set out to achieve. And these are anecdotal examples of what I've faced so far on this. So I'm only sharing that with you and I've given you three questions there. I just don't want to be just a research group working in the corner and we'll come out with a sort of a thesis at the end of it that says, this is what we think you should be doing and this is how you should be doing it, and then not having the support to follow that. So I know I've been a bit long-winded and I do apologise for that, but I do have my frustrations around this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think the really important points, and I think this is all about it, being a new system and a new process and learning as we go along. And I think probably a lot of the key is working relationships with cabinet members at the moment and making sure that those relationships are in place so that you can work effectively together. Because you're absolutely right, if we're not doing that, then, you know, it does make life really difficult for us. And for me, the really important thing is, you know, this time next year, whatever the committee system and structure looks like, however many committees we've got and what areas of work they work in, there will be some overlap, just as you've commented on, you know, with the send provision and finances, for example, you know. Can I see those two things sitting in the same committee? No, I can't. Probably all of us in the room can't. So we've got to work out this year how those relationships work so that we get the best out of providing the service and managing the finances. So this is all about the first steps that we are taking, you know, as leaders in the organisation to make the committee structure work. So for me, it's positive that you are establishing these issues early on so that we've got a better chance of looking at how we address those moving forward. But you're right, they are tricky. And I think, you know, we aren't decision-making because lawfully, we can't be decision-making. And I think, you know, we aren't decision-making because lawfully we can't be decision-making as transition committees. We are still under the old leader and cabinet model, so we have to work within the legal bounds of where we are. But I think we need to make sure that we are innovative in how we move and get the most out of it. And hopefully, the work that your committee will do will lay the foundations for next year. So I don't see any work that you're doing as being not worthwhile, but I think you've really very well expressed the challenges that we are all facing.
Let me just come back, Chair, on that. One of the points that you've just raised there, which is terribly important in my opinion, is the engagement of the cabinet members. Whilst the cabinet members are focused on the job for the year that we're going through, would they have the same sort of, I don't know how to put this, but would they have the same sort of resource to actually support us as chairs of the transition, or we support them? Because what we're trying to do here is create a system that starts to be implemented in May, which has a reflection of what we're trying to do now, moving into 2022. What I don't want is, and I hate using the word silos here because I think that gets overused too much, but I, a transition four does, or transition, whatever transition committee is, they do the work in isolation, and cabinet members, and members who are actually engaged in doing the work at the present time, and are unable, and I will say unable because I don't want to make anything political here, but unable to engage with us, which means that we won't be producing a product that has full knowledge. Because if they are engaged with us, then we can move into 2022 seamlessly to say that this is what this, the committee has actually decided, the transition groups, this is what we're starting to implement. And we may be 75% there. I mean, we can't be 100% there, but we may be 75% there. But I do believe that the cabinet members themselves have a challenge here as well of time and engagement, because I literally can't sometimes get a meeting with the cabinet members, and I can understand why not. So where do we put this in order of priority is the question that I'm posing. I'm not saying you give me an answer to it, because unfortunately, you would not be able to get an answer, but we need that priority to be given to this area of work because that's what we're moving into. And I do apologise for going on a bit, but I think I needed to clear that.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair.
I think you're absolutely right, and we're all learning as we go along, and we've all got to start to try and understand how we build this new system and how we make sure that it works for everyone. So thank you for the points you've raised. Councillor Richards.
I was going to say that clearly your cabinet members will be attending your transition committee, and they are very well aware of the financial problems as well. There's no reason why, if you're going to have visiting speakers, or whatever you want to call it, you can't ask for the overall finance cabinet member to come as well to support those other colleagues. Or indeed, you can ask for the director of finance or whoever to come to your committee, because that's what's going to happen next year, isn't it? There won't be cabinet members, there'll be the chairs of the committees, and they will be able to ask for who they want. So I don't see why you shouldn't have a bit of a practice on doing that this year.
Councillor Marif has been given some excellent answers. The only thing I would add before I move on, if I may, through you, Chair, is, first of all, just for the benefit of anyone watching this broadcast, what we're talking about here is the transitional committees, of which four have been set up, and this committee isn't one of them. So we're talking about the functioning of some other committees which have been set up, which are temporary for this year. The briefing that's on the agenda, primarily for information purposes later on today, deals with the details. So if anyone's listening and feeling a bit confused about what we're talking about, the details there under the last item on the agenda, I think, or the last substantive item. And it's relevant for this committee to be discussing them. And again, forgive me, members, I'm talking to, I'm talking to the wider audience when I say this, because I know you know this, is that these are testbed committees. They're not the future committees that have been set up already in shadow form, we're not in a committee system yet. This is a space which we've got to use this coming year, we've got a brief opportunity to help us learn how to relearn, how to make decisions in a committee setting, and there's a place where we can try out how we get public engagement right as part of that process. So I just felt that context was perhaps useful to add. And in terms of how engagement works through these committees, the key point that you'll hear us say over and over is that we think that we need to see this not as, how does this committee engage with the public, or how does this design of this governance process, how do we do that with the public involved? It's a bigger picture, which is about how the council changes the way that it relates to residents of Sheffield in every aspect of how it makes decisions and how it works day to day. As I understand it, that's the challenge that's been set for the council by its leadership, listening to residents. So how the transitional committees do that is a really useful sort of testbed place for this committee to get a feel for how it should work in future. Chair, shall I press on with the?
I've got a question from councillor.
Oh, sorry.
I've got some questions about the setup of transitional committees, which I was going to raise under the subsequent agenda item, but if we're discussing it now, I'm happy to do them now or wait, whichever you prefer.
Can we save them for me to do that later?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, just while I'm on these slides prepared by my project colleagues, I'd rather get to the end of them for now, and we'll come back to you much later. So the next slide on here, this is where you can really tell that it's been drafted by my programme project colleagues, who are professionals in this. So apologies that this seemed a bit jargony or, you know, perhaps oversimplifying something complicated, but we have to find a way to think about how we're going to do this work. The key point here is that, what I mentioned earlier, that we're not going to be able to do this in kind of one straight line. We're not going to be able to start by saying, right, let's spend months, listening to everyone who's got a view, coordinate it all together into a plan, then start designing, come up with a design for the future, which involves everything we've heard. And then once we've finished designing how our future governance is going to work, then we start arranging ourselves in terms of our officer resources and so on, to be able to make that happen. We don't have time to do them in a sequential way like that. And we wouldn't have if we, you know, if we were sat here in May, I'd have still been saying the same thing to you. It's just a large undertaking. So what we're trying to express here is that we're going to need to sort of chunk this up into what are the key questions, and we're going to need to be engaging as we go along in a constant dialogue with, and when I use the word stakeholders, which I know is a very jargony word, I'm talking about councillors, other officers, partners, residents, campaign groups, the whole piece, internal and external to the council in those cycles. And the other piece on here that I really wanted to make, just clarify, where there's an arrow written on here that says that this indicates increasing public engagement over time. I think what I want to say is that we don't mean that we're not going to be doing much at first, although of course, we will have to kind of wind ourselves up and, you know, we'll get into it as we go along. What we really mean by that is that we, and again, there's a little bit more detail on this later, and the real detail of this is intended to come to you at your next meeting. A plan is emerging that says that we will do a citywide piece of work in the new year, which is the soonest we can do it, with the support of a major national strategic partner on that. And before that, we'll be doing targeted work with individual groups and self-identified individuals and so on. We need to make sure that throughout the principles are about, making sure we're hearing from as diverse a group as possible and so on. But what that really means, I think, is that there'll be a different flavour of how that feels, that engagement work, leading up to that citywide piece of work in January and beyond. As I say, I know that's a bit vague, but we're still working on the details and we'll come back to you at your next meeting with what we think that really means, having done more work with you all along the way. There is one more slide on your printed deck, which actually I wasn't expecting to be presenting today. Jason, if you press next, is there another slide on the presentation? No, there isn't. So we'll make sure that it's online for those who are watching along. Apologies that it's not on your presentation. We weren't actually going to present it today, but I don't mind that it's here on what you've got in front of you, members. For those who aren't able to see it right now, apologies. It's a slide titled Delivery Cycles as a High Level Plan. And what it is, is a very detailed, lots of tiny writing with a, it's a Gantt chart, if you know what that is. So the dates along the top, September to March next year, and a sort of an early indication of how we think those cycles of design might fit between now and then. We've got about five marked on, five starting and ending. The key point is that they all overlap. So, you know, we're sort of saying, we're going to need to be starting all of this, all of these cycles, talking to people about the whole picture, well, well before we get to the end of this process, and that we'll need to be running those different conversations concurrently. That's all that was intended to show. The reason we didn't put it in the slide deck today, or I thought we didn't, was just that we weren't sure it added much to the previous slide, it's just a bit tiny writing. But I don't mind that it's there, we'll make sure it's on the copy that's on online for people to see. So thank you for bearing with me. As you can tell, I'm not the project person that was going to be presenting that, but I'm happy to take any more questions before we move on.
You did a great job. Thanks, Alex. I've got councillor Dale, please.
Just one question, sorry, Alex. It is about this one that's not on the screen. Sorry. I'm here, and I might just not be interpreting it correctly. Where it's got the governance model design, the first line underneath that says, transition committee debrief, which it says is between mid-September and October. I'm a bit confused about how we're going to debrief anyone when we've not had any committees yet.
Yeah, I can explain. Again, I appreciate that's not particularly clear. What we've heard really clearly from the chairs of the transitional committees is that we need to make sure that we're checking in really regularly with you, and we've got constant communication about what are you learning, about what the future needs to be like and what's working and not working, both so that we can improve it during the year and so that we can have the benefit of that as we design the future. So what that's supposed to indicate is that we will be making sure, as we committed to last time we met the chairs of the transitional committees, we'll be having meetings with the chairs all together and officers regularly. And we said we would make sure we scheduled them in at sensible places in the cycle. So I think that's a placeholder to say, where are they going to go? I anticipate the first one of those will be really soon after you've all had your first meetings.
Thank you. Are we all happy to know the update, please? Yes? Thank you. Item nine is the Vision of a Modern Committee Governance System: Draft Design Principles and Engagement Approach. Alex.
I'm sorry, it's me again. Thank you for bearing with me. So the first thing to say about this report is that when we were drafting this, we were very conscious that this was the first formal report to the first public meeting of this committee, which has got a lot of weight on its shoulders, and that the likelihood is that as we go forward through the coming months, people will sort of come on board, finding that they want to be involved in this process, and deciding they want to go back and understand what's happened so far. And so it felt important to do a little bit of a scene set in this paper, which is why there's a little bit of gumf in here, that you might not have had if it was a really targeted report. I know we all try and write short reports when we can, but in this case, I tried to include a little bit more of the context of how we got to here and where to find some more resources about what's happened to date. So I don't intend to go through that because I think it's primarily that context piece, and that includes for me paragraph 2.3, where again, I wrote in some of the detail which you just heard from me in a presentation, again, to make sure that that's captured somewhere in a formal report, and conscious as I was that that would be a presentation, and so it was better for you to see something in a report in advance as well. But I'm not going to go into that detail, I'm happy to take questions on it. The purposes of the report today are multiple, but so interrelated that we felt it was one report. Primarily, this is about getting us started. And actually, although we're going to decide today, I hope, some things, all of those things we're going to decide today are things we want to go out to stakeholders, with that definition I gave earlier being internal and external, to start talking to them about those things. So it's important to say, nothing today is fixed in stone, as least as I intended. And as the committee, you can steer that as you wish. One thing that we heard, we have heard at some of the earliest, lightest engagement we've so far done with the stakeholder group that we've currently got together, that is our building point, we went to speak to them to say, help us make sure we get this right as we go and build a more reflective representative group and so on. And one of the things they said was, we've not yet heard the council say, what is good about this future? The council has been told by lots of other people what they felt would be good about a future with a committee system. And it's important that they hear from councillors what they feel is good about that future committee system. So one thing that this is doing is giving members an opportunity to start saying what you feel that future looks like in a positive tone. And in doing that, we can do something useful that's going to help us define our decisions and review whether we've succeeded further down the line, which is if we state that future vision as a set of principles, that we say that future is going to be like this and that and this and that, all of which we're positive about, we can make sure as we bring individual decisions to this committee and to council and so on, that every time we're going back to those core principles of where we thought that future would be, and making sure that our decision takes us towards that and not away from it and so on. So what you've got today is a draft set of principles, and we'll talk in a moment about where they've come from, with the intention being that if you agree those today, we will keep them under review, talk to other people about when we've got it right, but we'll use this as our starting point. For number one, are we going the right way every time we take a decision from now on towards that positive future? And number two, when we are finished, or we review ourselves and say, did we succeed, we'll be able to use these principles to judge whether or not we succeeded. And this approach is something that's recommended to us by the Centre for Governance and Scrutiny, who are one of the expert groups that we're working with as we go through this process. And it's in their, yeah, their approach is, they're saying it's really critical that early on we define these design principles. So to say a bit more about the design principles before the engagement piece, my intention is to brief the whole paper before we go into a discussion, but stop me if you'd rather break it up into the two parts. Members here will be familiar, I wasn't because I wasn't here, but I've done a lot of work to read up about the 2019 work that was done by your scrutiny, one of your scrutiny committees, when you were looking into what could it mean to change governance system? And the council took an opportunity that was eventually endorsed by council to say, whichever model we end up with in future, there are some principles about how we think that should work, which, as far as the council's concerned, it calls it strategic aims, I think, to make sure that there would be those kind of positive outcomes, whatever the outcome of the referendum would be. And that work was really well evidenced. Members heard from experts in the field, from residents, from campaign groups, and put together what, to me as an outsider, looks like a good piece of work. And a set of principles came out of that, which you've got in your appendix, again, rather small for those of us pretending we don't use glasses. And so I've spelt them out as well to try and make that a little bit easier. And my view is, and our view, which is why we're recommending this in the committee for your consideration, is that these governance principles, ways of working, critical ambitions, translate pretty well, if not very well, into a vision for how this future with a committee system, now that we know that, should hope to operate. We suspect that it will need a bit of an update, and that there might be some specifics which, now that we know which way the referendum went, we, members of residents and others might wish to edit, but we need to start somewhere. So what is put before you is the complete unchanged set of principles, as originally endorsed by council from 2019, for your consideration. I have included in the report a couple of options, specific areas, where from early discussions with members, it appeared that there might be some changes that you might wish to make at this point. So under section 310, there are two specific options for changes. Those aren't included in your recommendations for today, so if as a committee you want to take on either of those changes now, you'd need to make an amendment to the recommendation. And we're absolutely open to other amendments today, as well as in future, as we expect this list of principles to evolve over time, as the committee learns more about where it's heading. So that's the principles bit. There is also a recommendation, so... There is also a recommendation, so under recommendation, let me get this right, recommendation five, A, B and C, I would say sketches at the highest possible level, by which I mean the least possible level of detail at this point, at this early point, how we want to go about planning for engagement with that whole group of stakeholders. And you can see it's section 4.5 of the report, just two paragraphs which set out in a very general term, how we envisage that looking and feeling. Part of this is practical, our strategic partner that we anticipate coming in to work with us on the, on section B, that wider engagement piece, they need some time to organise and plan before they can start that work, so we expect it to start in the new year at the earliest. But actually, our view, as you can see from the report, is that that fits reasonably well with the way that this work needs to unfold, which is that early doors, as we develop that show home I mentioned earlier, so that we can have meaningful conversations based on something in the room, tear it apart, put it back together and so on. We need to do some sort of focused work with individuals who have told us they're interested. And if we go out, as we intend to, to ask for anyone else who is interested in being part of those early discussions, to come and get involved in an open invite, do what we can to make sure that that invite is known to all and not just to the usual voices. And then, yeah, that helps us get to a point in sort of January time where we would then be able to launch a citywide conversation, which I anticipate being very high quality work based on who we'd be working with to deliver it. So, I'm very conscious that you don't have a lot of detail there about the engagement approach. And honestly, it's because it's in design at the moment and it's in flux. Our commitment to you is that at your next meeting, you'll get a report that goes into that in a lot more detail, puts flesh on those bones. And I'm not going to promise that the approach won't shift somewhat by then, because as I say, we really are working it up. But it felt like this report today needed to give you an opportunity to steer us even at this early stage, in case we're already heading off down the wrong track, and to make sure that it's clear how we intend to go about things over just the next month or so. It's quite enough of my voice, but I'm happy to take any questions and especially any thoughts about amendments to those principles.
Councillor Dale, then councillor James.
Thank you, it's me again, it's my voice this time. I have got a couple of questions regarding this, and I don't know if it fits here or not, but I have, I have a question around, it's really important to have the voice of the citizens of Sheffield around decision-making. So, while we're collecting information and we're out talking to people, at what point do we then put information back out to the citizens of Sheffield about the realistic position as a local authority that we're in? And I'm talking about managing expectations really, because, you know, there are lots of key priorities for the city. And what I wouldn't want to happen is one area, one priority to take precedent over everything else that happens within the city. And I think, so for me, there's that, how do we then, what information are we putting back out about the position of the local authority when it comes to making decisions? How we manage expectations in line with our priorities and resources? And how do we manage urgent decision-making? Because currently, under the current model, that would be a cabinet member that made an urgent decision. My concern is that it wouldn't be a committee that made an urgent decision, it would be an officer. I'm understood that that urgent decision-making would potentially be an unelected member that would then make that decision. At which point does a committee then, or the citizens of Sheffield, would they then be able to scrutinise that and call that in? So, for me, there's a lot of positives around a committee system, but my concern about handing that decision-making power to unelected members at certain points, my question, I think, around that is how do we then, as committees and cities of Sheffield, bring that back in? Thank you.
So, several questions there. So, excuse me, if I miss one, call me up. The first thing about what we're putting back out there, you're absolutely right, we're going to need to make sure that, as in any exercise which is supposed to be a discussion, it's not one way. We're used to worrying about one way meaning we're broadcasting and we're not listening. And what you're saying is we need to make sure we don't make the opposite mistake of doing lots of listening and not reminding to go back the other way. So, you're absolutely right, we're going to need to make sure that that happens. The point about this being one amongst many priorities in a way is good. And as the sponsor of this project now, I'd love us to chuck all the resources the whole council has into it, but we all recognise that there are other priorities and people in need and sometimes this governance stuff, I mean, I've had the word governance in my job titled now for well over a decade, but still, you know, I'll admit that it sometimes can feel like navel gazing, is this the important stuff? My view is that it is, that's why I've made my career in it and this is how the whole thing fits together. But your point is absolutely right that we need to make sure that balance is clear and the choices behind it are clear. The bit that I think we'll keep saying is that the change we're looking for, as I understand it, as a whole council, is not that we design a governance system that has got this listening and engagement built into it, but that we're trying to design a future council where across the piece, the citizens have got this critical role to play in decision-making. So, my feeling is that if we get that right, the issue about, have we been clear about relative priorities and so on, should also be okay, but it's a big challenge. On the specific point of how do we design a decision-making system under a committee model where urgent decisions have got appropriate oversight by elected members, a few things to say. So, first of all, that's one of those detailed design questions that we'll come to later and that will come to you with some options and research and so on. The second thing to say is, and I know you know this, but again, for the benefit of anyone watching, officers already take a lot of decisions at every council, including Sheffield City Council. There are, there's a whole scheme of delegations to officers and the chief executive and senior officers already have authority here to take urgent decisions. And Covid was an excellent demonstration in every authority of the necessity for that and every council found itself needing to have officers taking decisions urgently in order to respond. The key thing is that that's part of a democratic environment where members have a way to then understand what decisions have been made, challenge as appropriate, hold people to account. As for the detail of how it could work in a committee system, I don't want to speculate. There are models out there along the lines of urgent decision committees, which might be small and agile and so on, but I would expect you to end up with a system where officers maintain some urgent decision-making authority.
Any more questions? Councillor Gilligan, councillor Lee, then councillor Murray. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought I turned it off. Just go somewhere else.
Councillor Lee, do you want to step in, please?
Thanks. I mean, during Covid, decision-making was moved to officers and that was part of the emergency planning legislation, so it was already there, laid down in the law, that that's where decisions were moved to. And we were consulting, you know, throughout that period, cabinet members and other members were consulted on every decision that was made, well, not every decision probably because some decisions don't need, we don't need, you know, you have different levels of urgent decisions. Now, if there are high-level decisions that are urgent, they go to the cabinet member as much as they will be made, the decision will be made by the officer. They will be consulted, the cabinet member is consulted on those decisions, depending on the level of importance and urgency and so on. So, I'm just wondering then, how do you, how does that process, we need to understand how that process will work with these committees, not just the transitional committees when we come to the full committee system. I guess that's what I'm thinking. There's another point that I'm just thinking about. And I guess what the other issue for me is, how do things get to the committees? Because I understand how things get to a cabinet member, how are things then going to get to the committees? Issues, whatever we might want to do, whatever is current, whatever we have to respond to urgently, you know, the council changes all the time because circumstances are changing all the time.
Thank you, Chair. Me again. So, on the point of urgent decisions, thank you, you've given some great examples of the kind of formal and informal checks and balances that exist in a system where officers do have some decision-making authority, especially in urgent circumstances, but where we're operating inside a democratic arena. So, you should expect and can expect that whatever we set up in a committee system should have similar sorts of formal and informal checks and balances around officer decision-making. The point around how things get to committees, I'm worried that I might, you might get really bored of me saying, that's a question we're going to need to answer later, but because there are going to be a lot of those. And as we go through this process, we're all going to keep thinking of, oh, hold on, how's that going to work? So, one of the exercises we've been doing in the background is collating this giant list of all these questions to make sure that we're not missing anything as we go through this process. I don't want to try and answer it really in this setting because we'll have to come to it in evidence-based way later. But, you know, in summary, I could say, a good way to think about it would be a mixture between committees you already work in, in this council, that have their own work programmes and ways of deciding what goes on their work programme is part of the model. And how do cabinet members and cabinet currently find themselves engaged in issues coming forward and deciding how to be involved in that? We'll mix those two together to design a way that we have a decision-making pipeline that operates through committees.
Councillor Gilligan again.
Yeah, hopefully my phone won't go off. I apologise for that, I thought I'd turned it off. But my question follows on actually from councillor Lee. There's going to be a lot of issues presumably coming from our stakeholders. So, the first part of my question is, how do we choose which ones to prioritise, which is kind of, I think, where you're going. The second part is, different stakeholders will have different positions on things, so there might be quite a lot of conflict. So, is there a process in the governance that will enable us to deal with these kind of different conflicts?
So, when it comes to conflict, ultimately, my view is traditional, which is that it's the role of elected members to balance the differing and sometimes conflicting priorities of the residents of the area they serve. It might seem like a bit of a get-out clause, but I think that's why it's so important that there's a democratic lead on this piece of work. We will, of course, need to find ways to help people feel that they're being heard and listened and their views are valued as part of that process. Forgive me, I've forgotten the specific of your first of the two questions. Do you mind restating it?
Yeah, I think it was just following on from councillor Lee's. We will get a lot of issues and how do we prioritise?
Of course, prioritising, quite. Well, as I say, we've got this giant list of questions arising already and the issue of how to turn that into a sensible order in small enough chunks to bite is weighing heavily on our minds at the moment. I don't have an answer for you now as to how we'll prioritise that, but we will need to come to you with an approach, a suggestive model of what to tackle and what order. And as issues arise, I expect this committee to be giving us a steer as to which issues to prioritise and make sure that we're covering.
Thank you. We've got councillor Murray, councillor James and then councillor Richards.
Thank you, Chair. Mine is a very simple and easy question really now. I mean, we've gone out on the referendum saying all 84 councillors will have a say in the decision-making process. But the question that keeps getting put back to me, and I don't really have the answer, which is why this question is simple, I might be missing something that you're going to tell me and it will instantly click, is that I've actually worked in a committee system for many, many years, within this council as an officer for many years. And what tended to happen is, which is what people are trying to avoid happening this time, is that there used to be an almighty debate on something. And then, at the end of the day, everybody will listen to it and then the hands will go up and the majority party always won. And so, this is the question that some of my sort of people from the ward I represent have been asking, how do you square that off when you're obviously not, in the laws of democracy, obviously, you're going to have parties who are in the majority and parties who are not? How can it be collegiate in that sense is one of the questions. So, I mean, what I'm trying to get across here is, would it just end up, I know it's not in context with what you've just done there, but I needed to ask this question because I think we might miss the simple ones and we might get involved in too many of the detailed issues. But the message that we sent out to the public was that there will be a decision-making process that will take into account every councillor's opinion. And you could probably argue that there will, I might be able to say something and I've had my views, but at the end of the day, I might not get my way because the majority party will always do. So, the question is, is it going to end up being just a bit of a debating society or at the end of the day, the decision will still be the same, whatever, which in which case, I don't think it's changing drastically, apart from community engagement and everything else, which we already say we do anyway, will be enhanced in this model. And I think people have touched upon the priorities issue, so I'm not going to touch on that. So, my question is very simple and very innocent, how to square the decision-making process of a democracy like this?
Can I just intervene then? Because I think that's a little bit political and I think it's unfair to ask officers because that's really, it's really directed at all of us as councillors. So, that is down to all of us as councillors to make that work. And I think it's really unfair to ask officers for an opinion on that or how we can physically write that into the constitution. I think that's something that as individual councillors, we have got to make sure we make that work, however that happens. I don't know, but I do think it will be a challenge. I think you're right, it will be very, it will be very challenging for us, it will be taking a lot of councillors, quite possibly outside of their comfort zone. But if we are going to make the committee system work and if we're going to make sure that all councillors have a voice, then it's up to us as a group of councillors to make sure that we come up with a system that can do that as best and as well as we can. But I think it would probably be a little bit unfair to ask officers to answer that at the moment.
Can I just clarify? This was an open question, I wasn't directing it directly at the officers. Yeah. Because I think it is unfair for the officer to be able to answer a question like that.
Yeah, I think we're on the same side there, so yeah.
There's one factual thing that I think maybe is not unhelpful to say at this point, that I'm perfectly happy to say as an officer, not feeling drawn into politics at all. And again, this is addressed, I think, I'm thinking of our wider audience. So, the part of the question, the part that I'll address, is in what way does a committee system involve all members that is different to a cabinet system? And I know you know this because you've worked in a committee system before. So, pardon me, but if you allow me to, I'm going to do a quick run-through, what I think is the easiest way to understand that, which is, when we moved from a committee system as a country, from a committee system to cabinet and leader systems, and there was this recognition that there would be some decisions, not very many honestly, and not very many big ones because they tend to go to cabinet, but some decisions taken by individual members without being, as they would have previously been, in a room with a politically proportionate group of councillors. And also recognising that cabinet was very, very unlikely to be a politically proportionate place, where again, decisions were being made without political proportionality around the table. So, and again, I know that you all know this, but that's why scrutiny was invented, because they said, we still need a committee which in effect does that, which has the political proportionality on it and that relates to those individual cabinet members and the cabinet. So, that was seen as the space for that involvement of all members from all parties in that decision-making work. Now, the way I imagine this, as we go back to a committee system, is you kind of merge those two things back together again. So, although the decisions that are taken by a committee are collectively owned by that committee, even the members who voted against, they're part of the committee that decided that thing. The difference is that you have got the opportunity in a public committee setting for every councillor to have a voice in the debate and a hand in the air that affects the outcome. So, that even if there is a political majority on all of the committees... So that even if there is a political majority on all of the committees, whichever party that would be, and it felt predictable that there would therefore always be an outcome that led that way, the difference is that every councillor will be putting their hand in the air, where previously, only the administration on certain decisions would have been able to do that. Thanks for bearing with me, I know that's a lengthy answer.
Councillor James.
Thank you Chair. My question's going to follow on kind of from what you've just discussed there for councillor Mohammed there. And this is a bugbear for me, so you specifically asked us a question about amendments to government's principles seven and four. Seven, I'm quite relaxed on, so I'll put that out there, I'm not that worried about the change in the wording. With regards to principle four, and maybe this isn't one necessarily for members, it's for officers, it's for members, for me, the process of scrutiny has to be an integral part of the committee, because we will make decisions as elected members, and those decisions will have ramifications for our city. At some stage, it would be appropriate for us to say, and was that decision right? Did it make the city better? And that's kind of hinted at in the amendment that's put forward here by Mechanism. But what does rile me and get under my skin a little, is the debate has been that scrutiny can only look at decisions and say whether they were good or right, that's utterly nonsense, because the scrutiny things that we had before were scrutiny and policy development groups. So I'm kind of a bit annoyed about that, it is one of my bugbears. So, I'm going to come to this thing, that if we don't reflect on the decisions we made and whether they were advantageous or otherwise for our city, how on earth are we going to learn from what we've done? Otherwise, we'll be ploughing on forward into the dark without understanding where we've come from, which will adversely affect where we're going. So it's a principle point of it here. So, for me, I want to see scrutiny left in there as a fundamental role of what the committees will be doing. I want to see the word scrutiny left in there. I know it might be a bit of a sop to some campaign groups, and this is very political, and I apologise, but I don't care. If we don't pay true heedance of where we're coming from, we will never know where we're going. So, what is the issue with taking the word scrutiny, obliterating scrutiny from the process? I am quite happy with the proposal put forward, which basically says that we'll not just merely be a navel-gazing organisation, which kind of suggests to me that the amendment, that we'll also be holding stakeholders that come to us with suggestions, and will say, for instance, a certain group with a certain vested viewpoint suggested we go down this route, wasn't that a stupid idea in reflection? I don't mind doing that, and I don't mind us calling in others like the regional city mayor and voluntary groups or whoever that make stuff to us. But why are we so afraid of the word scrutiny? That's something I really want to pick up on.
So first of all, I'm not afraid of the word scrutiny. My career background, you can look me up on LinkedIn, my first engagement, involvement in democratic services was that I got asked to take on scrutiny at Essex County Council many moons ago, and so I feel quite a kind of a sense of, what's the word, like attachment to overview and scrutiny as designed in the cabinet and leader system. And, yeah, I'm happy with the idea, I'm not trying to eradicate it, the key thing, I think you've given a really good example of why you might want to not include the word scrutiny, which is that when we see the word scrutiny, we think of overview and scrutiny, the system that has been in the cabinet and leader model. And you're quite right, overview and scrutiny has two roles, two functions, one of which is holding to account, the other of which is policy development. My view is that this phrase in the principles was intended to primarily talk about holding to account. I think that's the intention of the phrase, and I agree that it's critical, that there's a principle in there that says we will get that right in this new structure. Whether it's a committee called a scrutiny committee, or if it's built into the terms of reference of all your other committees, or some other way of doing it, I'm currently completely, not fast, don't mind how you do it, it's critical that you've got a way of reviewing, just as you say. But, the reason why we suggested you don't use the word scrutiny in this phrase is that actually I think it's less clear to use it. First of all, it's less clear to use it because, are we referring to overview and scrutiny or not? Or do we mean holding to account in some way? The second reason I'm suggesting taking it out is that it makes it look a little bit like you've already decided what a governance model should be. Because we think it's an open question whether or not you have a scrutiny committee, or committees that do scrutiny in other ways, or how you want to do that, if you include scrutiny now and people think you mean overview and scrutiny, looks a bit like you've predetermined how you're going to do that.
Are you okay with that councillor James?
Yeah, so, yeah, I can see where you're coming from with that one. But what about review and reflect then? Because those words aren't in there, or is that too prescriptive in itself?
No, I think an excellent thing to do, that I can't do on the fly, haven't got the brain power to, would be to check through the other principles and say, is there something here that we feel captures the policy development role that we want to make sure is effective? In which we look at how we're operating and make sure that it's happening effectively and reflect on how we want to make decisions. My view is that your decision-making committees will all do that. The ones that you already have, that will still be there in future, like planning and licensing and audit and so on, probably already do some reflecting and how well is this working? And when there's a tricky decision coming up, they don't just decide it on the day, they do some work leading in. I would expect that your new decision-making committees that will be set up alongside those existing ones will operate in a similar kind of way. But, quite right, is there a principle in here that captures that? And if it's not, you could add it today or over the coming weeks and months as we refine these.
Thank you.
Councillor Richards and councillor Lee.
Okay. I think we all seem to be approaching this in a sort of a passive sense, that we think officers are going to do things. It's our job as the members to actually drive this, because that's what the citizens of Sheffield have asked us to do, and officers are here to help us to do that, not the other way round. So, when we talk about perhaps more stuff being delegated to officers than we feel comfortable with, then that shouldn't happen. It should be up to members to say, this is how it ought to work, and we think that this will work for members and for officers and for the people of Sheffield, who will be able to see how a decision has been made. And, like councillor Marouf, because I'm also dead old, I was actually a councillor under a committee system, and I do remember the imperfections of it, as well as some of the things that people like. Now, when you say that you might lose votes, yep, you might, I can't tell you how many votes I have been on the losing side of during my time as a councillor, and that's what's called democracy. Now, when we talk about being worried because there's going to be conflict, of course there will be conflict, we are all elected, I'm an elected Labour councillor, Marouf, you're an elected Lib Dem councillor, and you're an elected Green councillor, and that is because we come with certain beliefs to this, we don't come to this council as sort of just people who happen to have stood for the council, we've stood for a reason and for a party by and large, and so we hold those particular ideals dear, and those don't necessarily mesh with other colleagues. There are vast amounts of things that we do have in common, and those are the things that I think we can work on. Councillor Rivers and I have already been discussing how we would like our transition committee to work, and what the issues are we would like to raise. I would expect a chair and a vice-chair to be driving an agenda, I would expect them to be listening to other members of the committee who say, these things are coming up that are important to us, we know that the lax will be bringing us issues which are important to people out in the areas, and we're going to have to work on all those things. Now, there will be times when we disagree, so what we need to do is say, not there's going to be conflict, because that sounds like we're all going to have submachine guns around the table, what we need to say is, we're going to disagree, how are we going to disagree? How are we going to develop a culture of disagreeing well? Because that is what the people of Sheffield expect us to do. They have elected us in all our various hues, and they don't expect us to suddenly say, when we get here, we don't have those beliefs anymore. But how we talk to each other about those is as important as those beliefs that we have. So that is something, when we've talked here in our principles about how we do business, we've got, decision-making structures must not inappropriately increase delegations to officers, that's a principle which we will adhere to as democratically elected representatives of the people of Sheffield, and we need to make sure that we are part of making that a balance, not just saying, ooh, writing constitutions and things is incredibly dry, we'll leave that to Gillian. We've got to take an active part in making sure that it's a constitution that works for the members and for the people who we serve, and also, under how we do business, ensure that the appropriate support, training and skills development is available. This is what we have started to do with some of the training that we're receiving from the LGA and for the Centre for Governance and Scrutiny, where we're going to try and develop those skills about disagreeing well, and then learning to work with people afterwards. Because at times, you know, we'll have some fierce disagreements, but we're all still here afterwards, and we all still have to work together. So how do we do that? And I think that sometimes, we've seen the council, particularly full council, as a bit of a bear pit where we all have a good go at each other, but let's think about how we can change that, so that people who come to either observe how we work can say, yes, I recognise that as a mature setting, but also recognise that we do disagree well, because those are things we need to do. And if sometimes there is a vote, and it comes down to us losing, then we'll do that with good grace and not sort of flounce out or take our bat and ball home. It's, you know, what we're being asked to do is something that's quite difficult, because we've got quite comfortable being adversarial. But if we're going to create this new politics, we've got to do it well, and not just feel it's back to the old way of committees, and oh, how we missed that. I think that's just a really important thing. I'm sorry if I've gone on about it, as you know, I am a real amirak about these things, and I think we can design in some good features that make us work together well, and when we don't work together well, we disagree well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Richards, well said. Councillor Lee.
I think Shaun has said it all really, actually, because I was much better than I could, so well done. I guess it was about, when we've come to decision-making in a committee, and there will be differences, because like you say, we all have different ways, we've come to our parties because of, we're drawn to the specific political parties we're drawn to for all sorts of reasons, and we have some shared understanding of how life should be, I guess. But it was about, and we talk in our party about collective responsibility once we've made a decision, I mean, I don't know whether that applies to decisions that are made within a committee, if you've disagreed, is then that there is then a collective responsibility in terms of the decision is there, we all get behind it and support it, even if you've disagreed at the outset, I don't know, maybe that's for other parties to consider as well. Because I wouldn't like to see, be in a position where we have, we've come to a decision, one group wins the vote, if you like, and then another party besides, or individuals might say, I am going to take this elsewhere, I'm going to flounce off, if you like, because that, we all know, we could do things like that. So that was, but Shaun has put it much better than I could, but I, you know, it is something we need to really think about. And I guess the other points I was going to talk about was, again, we talked about what's the positives about committee systems, we can all think about what the positives might be, but some, I think it was the business groups are worried about the speed of some decisions, and that's really important, because some decisions need to be made speedily, they're very critical for the city, and we need some haste, and as well as transparency. We can take our time on some decisions, but some do need haste and as well as transparency, and I think we need to somehow make sure that that gets built in. And there are lots of sensitive issues, and I know as a past cabinet member, sensitive issues come to cabinet members, they don't need to be necessarily made transparent because of the very nature of them, and they, you know, involve individuals, nevertheless, but really very important. I guess how is that dealt with? Who deals with those? Is that an officer? Or is that an officer in conjunction with the chair of the committee and the deputy chair? You tell me.
More good points that we will need to resolve at some time along our journey. Thank you Mary. Councillor James.
Thank you Chair. I was tempted, well prompted to go and look at the principles that we have in the appendix stuff while councillor Richards was talking. I'm thinking about what we said before, and I'd actually go back on something, I said I was quite relaxed about number seven changing. I've just reviewed it, and changing number seven as listed here would then be repetitive of number 10 in terms of the wording, and it picks up on what you were saying about. I should have been more mindful myself in terms of what's in here, because point 15 talks about reflect but not review. One of the things I was thinking about in here, and listening to the debate, is point eight talks about member-led authority. That is causing a lot of angst in here, as we've heard already, maybe there's a way of reprioritising the member-led part, to make it more prominent and further up the list. I certainly wouldn't put it ahead of openness and transparency, but maybe somewhere close to there would certainly help settle some of the nerves. So, yeah, being as you were looking for a steer on 3.10, 1 and 2, I think we may want to revisit that at a later meeting, because obviously there's a lot of overlap with the existing principles that we might want to come back at. So, hopefully that's helpful, and also, yeah, if we can beef up maybe point 15 and re-elevate the member-led point of point eight to higher up the agenda, maybe that'll be helpful for future meetings. I'm not sure whether that needs to go as a motion or be voted on or whatever, I'll take your guide on that Chair.
We'd need to do those as recommendations, so hopefully somebody's writing these all down in a better form than I am, so we can sum them up when we get to the end of the discussion. Thanks. Councillor Bailey.
Just wanted to respond if I may. Just quickly, I think the first thing I need to say is that the order these are in is in no sense an order of priorities. So if you wish to elevate it in some sense, you could perhaps be looking to add it to the list of critical aims, if you think it should be in a different section, but the order is by no means an order of priority. So if you want to somehow highlight it, it would be helpful if you were able to recommend a sort of a way to highlight it that wasn't just putting it higher up the list. I know that's tricky, I'm not sure what to suggest for you. In my view, the fact that it's in the list, you as members can treat it as much of a priority as you wish to when you're going through the decision-making process.
Thank you Chair. Just a couple of things, one, to agree very much with Mary, the speed of decision-making, it has to be a modern, professional committee that can get decisions done in a timely manner. If things got bogged down, I mean, I was a member of the education committee as a non-councillor, and I was also a member of the housing committee as a non-councillor. But there's obviously a non-council member can vote, but can speak and get the points across, which is fine. But the length of time it took to make a decision on anything, it could be rattling around for a couple of years, and things can be lost, we just don't want that. We want a modern committee structure that is suitable for this century and the next, if we can. Yeah. I have also a concern... I have also a concern about officers making decisions. And I take again what Mary said about the way cabinet members make decisions now by taking advice. And at times, you know, officers will have decisions to make and they discuss it with cabinet members. Not quite the same under a committee system. And it really worries me. And I think it's something we're going to have to come back to in more detail, office decision-making. The other item that concerns me is when we have to deal with confidentiality or issues that are confidential. So we have part twos. Is that the way forward? Is there a different way of doing it? But confidentiality really matters. It's important to have everything in the public domain that it's feasible to. But there's others that affect individuals or individual businesses that we've got to be very careful on. And individual communities sometimes. And we need to have to build in something there that we know that items of confidentiality will be dealt with properly, debated properly with members' involvement. So I think it's another thing to add to the list, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Councillor Lee.
I just wanted, because Penny said she was on the Education Committee and we got something through from Peter Price last night. And he was on, and he was just talked about the Education Committee. The Education Programme Committee had 38 council members, 18 non-council members, which were church, union, private sector reps. It had two deputies, met on the second Wednesday after council in the council chamber. It had many subcommittees, including Post 16, Community Education Schools, subcommittees, careers, et cetera. And there were some changes once Post 16 education went from the council. So that is what we're talking about. And it's given me a lowdown, it's given us a lowdown of all the committees that were, yeah. So this is a commitment we as members are going to have to make. There will be many, many more meetings in this council, in this town hall than there were previously.
Scary meeting. Councillor, it is.
I don't think I'm going to be, I'm going to probably repeat what other people said. But in terms of the principal design, it's a work in progress. So we're trying to look at the knots and bolts like my supervisor at the university would say. And it's good to be questioning some of these issues. And we will have a lot of, I'm not going to use the word conflict, but we will have some overlapping issues that would come from the lacks. And how we put them together is really important. But in terms of, I'm not going to talk about decision-making because you've covered that. We will also have to think about that we are taking our communities with us, not leaving them behind. And when I say knots and bolts, I'm talking about listening to everything. And so we are the members, we are the ears and eyes of what needs to be done in that. And we're not making your work harder, Alexandra, by emailing you. But it would be really good to, it's good that we can just email you and then you're taking it on board. And I just want to say that we appreciate that you are working hard to do this. It's, we've got very limited time to do. And we're all overstretched and non-partisan way of working might not be very experienced that we have. As my first time trying to work in committees. And for many of us, it is, it is that. But some of us have a lot more access to communities of different characteristics, like Laurie would say. And also communities that have been labelled as hard-to-reach but seldom had communities. But it's not only that, it's just the fact that Sheffield is going to a new platform, a new milestone, a new thing. And we're all pulling it together. So again, the knots and bolts are really important here. And we should all be on board and take on each other's voice and opinions, which is really great. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to respond actually to the point about the number of subcommittees and so on that councillor Lee is reporting. I feel like I've got to respond. If in, say, 12 months' time Sheffield City Council is operating under a committee system where each committee has got upwards of 20 something subcommittees, I will write on my CV that I failed to implement an effective committee system at Sheffield City Council. It's up to you as members to define what that's going to look like. And you have within your right and remit to do that if you wish. And I'm not going to sit here and stop you, you're going to have a vote at council and so on. But I think that the idea that this exercise is about returning to how it may have been with lots of subcommittees, just we mustn't let that proliferate because it simply cannot, it cannot be that way. The critical point is we're not designing a system in which members take on lots of new management responsibility for bits of the council that members don't currently, you know, make decisions on. This is about transferring the decision-making that the cabinet and the leader have into a committee setting. So the amount of work that those 10 individuals get through, you know, give or take, might be the amount of work that these committees need to get through. And if it's suddenly become much bigger just because we've got, you know, a mouth to feed of a committee asking for agenda items, I don't think we'll have succeeded. So absolutely good challenge, we've got to make sure we don't let that happen.
And I think that's a huge sigh of relief that we are not having all those committees. Because we don't want Alex to fail. Any more comments on this paper? We have got some recommendations on the paper in terms of agreeing the governance principles. So Mark Hughes wrote the first spanner in the works. We've been unhappy with the suggestion of amendments to points four and point seven. So I'll be guided by the committee really. Do we want to leave the mazes, throw in our suggestions? I know when I got councillor Labour's apologies this morning, he asked some comments which Alex is going to catch up with him and make sure he gets his comments to feed those. So do we want to agree the mazes, make a number of amendments? Or do we just want to send in comments and have a quick check on them at the next meeting? Alex? Engagement recommendations, yeah?
Sorry. Number 15 on page 28, that covers what Mark wants, doesn't it? And it says all those things without using the S-word. So is that all right?
Yes, Chair, it does partially. Because it does say reflect, doesn't say review, it does say reflect. So I'm halfway happy with that one. But specifically in 3.10, principle four. Yeah, maybe that does address some of that bit. In terms of governance, principle seven, I did notice there was repetition of wording, certainly in terms of local area committees later on in that proposed recommendation at the bottom bit, which does clash with what's in point 10 of the thing. So there is some element of maybe they need to be reviewed and brought back for a later meeting. So we don't have to scrabble over the wording now, maybe.
Yeah, good point. Are we concerned if there is duplication provided? Are we?
May I? What I'm thinking, Chair, through you, may I say? We've got so little time to get through this process. My feeling is that if what you wish to ensure is captured in these principles is there, but there's some duplication or something like that, I don't think it's worth delaying you agreeing what's here for that. If there's something fundamentally wrong or you want to add something that's really missing and we haven't got time to thrash it out now, you might find yourself in that position. But to address the pace of the situation, if you're content that we'll agree it as it is or with some adjustments today and review that as part of the ongoing, I think that'd be preferable to bringing it back without having agreed it first.
So on that one, yeah. If we as a committee aren't worried about having duplications in there. And in all fairness, bigging up the local area committees twice in there is not a biggie for me. As long as everyone else is compliant with that. The other thing I would then just ask is for the addition of review to be added to 15. Because reflect is good in itself. Because that means we look back on it. But to review it is different to reflect on it. Yeah.
So would you like to, I need to say reflect and review?
Yes, please, Chair.
Okay, I'm happy, we'll come to that in a minute. Councillor Murray.
Just a quick clarification, I think we talked about officer delegations. Are we going to look at reviewing officer delegations or did I miss something there?
That will come at some point in the process, yes. But what we need to sort out today are just the broader principles for how we move forward.
I just didn't want to lose that one. Thank you.
Councillor Richards.
I'm not sure if it goes here, but I'm going to say it anyway. Which is that under the training and development for members, that we are specifically for something around listening, arguing and conflict resolution. I don't know what you want to call it. But, you know, there certainly ought to be some sort of session on how we do these things well.
So that's an action to take away and have a look at the appropriate training that covers off those areas. We can do that. Councillor Lee.
Just about, I don't want to talk about the number of subcommittees we might have, but there are some very, there will be some kind of subcommittee or task and finish or whatever. Because councillor Ruth has mentioned send, that is really, really important. I'm sure he would want to use, that would be part of the committee's discussion. But it would, sounds to me like that would also be another grouping of people to discuss that. I don't know what you want to call it. You can call it, you don't have to call it a subcommittee, you can call it something else. Because there will be a period of time where you'll review it, look at it and then come to a conclusion. And I'm sure, I'm sure he's got all that in mind now that he will be doing that. And there'll be other issues as well.
Yeah.
Exclusions, which is, I'm sure I'm going to bring that up in our transition committee.
We do at some point need to get into the debate and discussion about committees and how they all work. But we need to get the principles for how we are working organised first so that we're all moving in a coherent way. Okay. So in relation to the recommendations, oh, sorry, councillor Dale, I forgot you.
Thank you. I just want to come back to the language in this around engagement and being clear about what that is. And there's nothing in here about the response back. So we've got a lot of engagements, so we're asking lots of questions, people coming to us with demands. But what are we doing about it and how do we communicate back? I think I'd like to see something in there. I'm not saying add an extra point, but it's just something around the language around engagement and what does that mean?
We've got the critical ambitions. We've got the city council engages involved and listens to its citizens, communities and partners. So would it be worth adding something on there about and provides regular feedback to the citizens? And then that's under the critical ambitions there, which I think is probably the right place for it to say.
An ongoing dialogue or some, I'm just mindful that people come with a list of demands to things. And then if this is a true partnership, it can't just be that, it's got to be a two-way dialogue.
How about, may I make a suggestion?
You may.
So I think that what you're asking for, the spirit of it is here, but it might not be stated. I think there's lots of things about engaging and as we know that we mean by that a two-way thing. I wonder whether, if you've got a couple of seconds while we hear from other councillors, if you wanted to look at number 16. It's the only one that says about communicating about something, how something at the council works. My feeling is that it might be possible to say, yes, in terms of how decisions are made, what decisions are, blah, blah, but also about other issues and decisions being made at the council level. I wonder if you might be able to build something into that which addresses what you want.
Councillor Austin.
Yeah, sorry, Chair, just very quickly, I was going to say, is this not actually covered under point 20 when it talks about demonstrate how engagement is shaping it and be honest about the impact it's having? Because I think that is the crucial thing, that I think feel that you're trying to get that we need to feed back to people and be, you know, open about what influence they're having and how we're responding to it.
Yeah, I think you're right, but to a lot, we can read this and some of us read it and understand it because this is our bread and butter. But not everyone's involved in this process. So demonstrating and it's just about the language for me. I know what engagement is and I know it's a two-way thing and I know how to demonstrate. But I just think we can look at that wording in number 16, I think that's great.
Councillor Richards.
Can we also under 16 just put on why we made that decision? Because it says, this is how we make decisions, this is what the decision was, this is what it means for the city. But we haven't said why we made that decision. Because it might be one that is distinctly unpopular. And you have to say, well, this is why we did it. We need to be able to justify why we made a decision. And say to people, yeah, you all hate this decision, but it was made because of this in good faith. Which is the hardest bit we do.
So that would be easily fulfilled in terms of after the hyphen put in, in terms of why and how decisions are made. Are we all happy with that one? Yeah, that was the easy bit. Councillor Dale. Are we content to agree the recommendations with the four and seven changed to the new wording? Are we all happy with that? And if Alex goes away and comes up with something to stick on the end of 16 that deals with the point that councillor Dale's making about giving clarity to the feeding information back, are we all happy to agree that? And does that not then delay the process so we can get on with it? And you can circulate that to members as soon as we've got it done? Are we all happy to agree in that light, please? Yeah? Phew, thank you. Oh, oh, hang on. Gillian's going to work. Hopefully not just for us bantering the words.
I'm not putting a spanner in the works, I promise. Just to clarify that and also a delegation to you as Chair to be able to sign that off once that's been circulated and everyone's happy with it. I'm just thinking then it doesn't have to come back again to the committee.
Very practical, all happy? Yeah. Thank you. You can indeed. Yeah, Penny and I can do that.
I'm really sorry about this. And this probably is just going to go against what you've all been saying. But I think what it needs to be is a delegation to me in consultation with Chair and Vice-Chair. Because it's to be to an officer rather than to an individual councillor. So apologies for misleading you in the first place there. But I assure you, I won't take the decision until the Chair and the Vice-Chair are happy with it.
We all heard it here, folks. Okay? Thank you, everyone. Sorry. Item 10, the governance committee report. Alex, you are back on.
Last one from me. Oh, my voice is already going, there we go. It's been a long time since I've sat in an actual committee meeting briefing people on actual papers. It's quite nice to be back. Okay, so this one, this is on the agenda for perhaps a different reason to some of the other reports we've had today. This is a to-note report, which normally I would stomp on if someone else suggested it went to a committee meeting. Because I'd say it wastes everyone's time if it's just a note. But because I wrote the report, I let it go on the agenda. And in this case, in this case, what we're doing here is saying, look, this is actually an internal document. The appendix, the appendix one, this was not intended for public consumption. This is something that I wrote. I mean, I used something else that had been written by Jill. Adapted it to produce something for the benefit of the members who are on transitional committees to explain to them primarily how we envisage their role working and what we'd agreed with the Chairs and so on. But actually, once we produced it, we felt But actually, once we produced it, we felt this is important, we know that it's a bit, this is a new concept, it's something that we, Sheffield has invented, the idea of a transitional committee like this. And it's really important that we make sure everyone, all the members on the council and the officers who are working with them and also the public and others who are interested in being involved in this process, understand what we're getting on with. So we felt this was the appropriate setting to put this in the public domain by putting it on this agenda. It gives you the opportunity as a, as a committee to talk about them if you wish and how you want to work through them and with them, but if you don't want to discuss that today, don't worry, it's taken as written in the report that this is their, a critical part of this process and you'll be hearing from them and hopefully encouraging them through each of you as Chairs to do certain pilot work and so on. So it's for noting, it's for commending to all members, but the real purpose is to actually just be open about what we're saying behind the scenes about how do we expect these to work.
councillor Austin.
Thank you Chair. I've just got a few questions around the arrangements for transitional committees and I apologise if all the people have had these questions answered elsewhere. So my first question is, accepting that full council voted for these, can we, can I ask why this arrangement was chosen and why we did not choose to have shadow committees? Is the Cabinet member obliged to bring any decisions for discussion to a transitional committee? And if not, why not or accepting that the Cabinet member will still be actually taking the decision? In our terms of reference, this committee has oversight of the transitional committees, so how does that work? And how or when or if will the transitional committees be able to bring recommendations to this committee about how their particular subject areas, if you like, should be addressed in the future systems? And how does that link, so how does the whole process link in with the development of the new committee system?
What I was just saying to the Chair was, I think some of those are questions for members to answer, especially the early ones about why this approach and so on, so I'll let members address those. Most of the other questions are things which are just open to you all as members to define as we go through this process. I don't think we've said anything hard and fast yet about how this committee will relate to those committees, how you will hear from them, make sure that that becomes a constructive part of the design process for the new committees. We haven't sought to define it, we're going to be moving so quickly and we don't know yet what you're going to learn or think is important, so we haven't put a box around it. My view is that if we're doing this right, we'll be in constant discussion, informally between individuals, between members and individuals, Chairs of committees and so on, about how it's going, as part of your work programming, as part of planning how you're going to operate and probably we'll find ourselves with formal reports surfacing periodically through this, through this time that say, here's what we've learnt so far that we think is important and we probably need to put in a public setting and that we want to make sure it's factored into decision making. Probably you'll also find that as issues come here for decisions about how certain aspects of the future governance structure, ways of working will work, that members will feed in their individual experience as Chairs and Vice Chair, pardon me, Chairs and Vice Chairs of transitional committees and say, well, on this issue we've learnt this, let's not make sure we don't incite that. So I think it'll be multiple, the ways that they feed in, we haven't sought to define it. Was there anything else here that I was supposed to address? Oversight transitional committees, how they bring recommendations, no, I think that's it. It's open to us to make this work within the environment we're in that we haven't set hard and fast.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I might be saying something that's really obvious, but the oversight here is not about the work that's being done by the transitional committees, it's purely about the mechanisms and the style and the type, ways of working. So what this committee's interested in is how the transitional committees operate, not what decisions they're looking at or what subject matter they're looking at. So I just thought it was worth clarifying that, does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you Gillian. And I think just to follow on in terms of why it's not shadow committees, I think because it's important that at the end of the day, we want to have a new way of working, a way and a system that will work for Sheffield, so shadowing what we already have doesn't feel like it would be moving us any further forward and we could quite easily get stuck in a rut of, well, do next year, we just have these 10 shadow committees and keep going. So we have the one-year plan, we have the four committees so that as Gillian has just said, they can look at the, look at work streams, they can trial different ways of working, we can start to get a feel for how we think the new system should look without being too stuck in the what we've got and keeping what we've got. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you for your answers. I'm still not clear how the transition committees, so if I go along to my transition committee, which obviously we haven't met yet, so we've no idea what's going to happen, and we're just discussing topic A and topic B and the Cabinet member goes away and makes a decision on topic A and topic B, how do we then feedback and say, well, this didn't work because? I don't understand how, at what point the transitional committees are asked, how is it going to work when you are making those decisions?
I think that's the whole point of this committee in terms of the Chairs are on this committee and they will feed that information back in here so that we can look at that and we can make sure that we factor that into the learning and the process.
So that implies then that members of the transitional committee who are not also on this committee will just have to persuade the Chair that their views are taken into account? So how do other members of the transitional committees feed back their responses?
Well, at the end of the day, the Chair of the committee has a responsibility to its members, so if you raise an issue with the Chair of your committee, it is the responsibility of that Chair to make sure that that information is fed into the appropriate channel. So if that's something that is in relation to the transition committees and how they're going to work, how they're going to be formed, then the Chair should bring that here to make sure that that works so that we have a process that goes through that is transparent and actually works for all members.
Sorry, just as a Chair of one of the transition committee one and I think Sue, you're a substitute for my transition committee, as far as I've got on my list here, what I would offer to do with the members of my committee is do a debrief with members to get feedback, to see how things are going. Because as Chairs, it's up to us to work out how we work in partnership with all of the members. So I would put that out there that we might have a session, we might have a meeting, I would be more than happy to facilitate a debrief for all members for feedback and then feed that in.
Thank you. Any more questions on the report? We're all happy to agree the recommendation, noting the paper? Noting very hard, thank you. Date and time of next meeting will be held on the 27th of October at 2pm here in the council chamber. Thank you all for your attendance this morning. Andrews, thank you for your perseverance, eating through it all, well done. Thank you all, have a good afternoon.